We'll call the meeting to order. Would everyone please rise and if so inclined, please join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think Larry said it was Parents' Night, maybe? So he'll be here when he gets here, so. Other than all present and accounted for, we've said the pledge. So we have kind of a busy agenda this evening. I would look for a motion to approve unless someone has any additions that they'd like to throw on there.
I don't have any additions unless somebody else does.
Okay. Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to approve.
I think the motion is on.
Thank you. We have a motion. Second? Seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried. Schedule presenters. Jen Chapey, the elementary principal, and Dave Peterson will give a presentation or something to that effect concerning elementary school safety.
Sounds like a plan.
So if we go to run program, or do you have that on your slide?
I'm just gonna click present. Upper right?
Yep.
Oh, perfect. It works. Look at that. Okay. So Cannon Falls Elementary School's secure entrance. This is what it looks like now when you walk in, right with the front entry. And I'm sure you've been around to some other schools, kind of get an idea of what that looks like. We've been talking about this for a while. We shouldn't just be able to walk in. No matter what, no matter if the doors are locked, we should walk into an office. Or at least walk into an area that's not going to give access to the entire building. That's a big deal. So our goal is to align with our mission statement to provide a safe learning environment and secure facility for all. So that has come out in our strategic planning, that safety is a high priority. So I first want to just preface this by saying, Dave and I are not very good when it comes to, I don't know, exactly showing you what our plans are, what our vision is. So please do not pass judgment on the two of us trying to figure out how to show you what the directive we were going. So it's pretty pitiful, but here goes.
I think it's great.
Okay. Really, this is what I was talking about. So on the left is what you see is that entrance without anything from here you go into the building. On the right-hand side, Dave, I'm gonna have you explain it, coming off of the office. So currently, when you walk in the first set of doors, there's a little vestibule. And then, when you walk in the second set of doors, it's wide open. Cafeteria's on the left. You can go into the preschool hallway, straight into the building.
Yep. So the first vestibule, you probably have about 10 to 12 feet in between doors. And then, like Jennifer said, once you're past those doors, the only thing, you can go anywhere you want. The office is right here. You don't have a clear view. And it makes it really difficult, once you buzz someone in, because we do have a buzzer system, to be able to see where these people go. So the idea here is, is to basically take that second vestibule wall and mimic it all the way down the end to right before you enter the office. So the doors that you have to enter the office will be on the other side of the new glass vestibule. So this would be glass. These would be four doors, basically mimicking the current doors that you see now.
So locked at all times. And so if a visitor were to come in, and we're gonna kind of take you through the building little by little.
With more artwork.
More artwork. Really nice artwork. When we look at the current entrance to the main office, so compared to the picture on the right, you will see the yellow lines replicating the last slide here. And then, there would be a new office door going into the main office. That would be a fobbed door. So the visual, the white replicates glass. That visual for our secretaries, whoever's running the front office, will be able to see that person, make a connection with who that might be, their temperament per se, and whether or not they are buzzed in to the main office. Once they get into the main office, there actually will be no exit for them, aside from that door back out of the building, unless they are fobbed. So leading to my next one. Before I move on though, Dave, anything else?
No, that explains it pretty well. I know it's kind of, the doors aren't exactly here, but you just got to imagine, once someone comes in here, the only place they can go is into the office. Once they come in that set of vestibule doors, there's nowhere for them to go but inside the office. And to get in that office, they'll actually need to be buzzed in.
And backing up real quick here, Dave, can you explain what the yellow line on top means? Because this is a visual, I think, that's important for you to know.
Yeah, we didn't go all the way to the ceiling like the current vestibule door is right now. The reason we didn't do that is, number one, you really don't need it. Number two, there's gonna be no additional lighting, sprinkler systems, ventilation, nothing. We'll have the same airflow that we have, the same lighting that we have, and it still secures it. So it's a huge savings. And I've actually done this exact design before, and it works pretty well.
And actually, if there, if an intruder would, you know, attempt to get over this set of doors, you'll see as we move on that their space is very limited about where they can go. Because now they're over that, you'll see what I'm talking about in just a little bit. Okay, so the current office entry and exit to the preschool wing.
So that new office door is gonna be right here in the block.
Yep. And then, before that gray door, as you can kind of see, is this will be closed 24/7. So they are walking in, and they can either go into the main office, which is like most schools, where we're at with security. You have an option to go into the office, and that's it. So this is not going to be glass by any means. It'll just have the two doors.
Yep. It'll be a block wall. And it'll be steel fire doors.
Okay, so doors remain closed at all times, you know, rerouting us to the cafeteria in different directions for, let's say, preschoolers to have lunch. That's a whole different ballgame. We'll talk about in a second.
And of course, once you are in, and those doors are closed, you're in the office, you have a student down in this area, you need, you can exit on the other side of those doors from the office. Or a staff member or student with a clear glass is able to go into the office from this, so you're not walking all the way around.
So in addition to this, remember I had talked to you, I'm just gonna go back a little bit. When I had talked to you about if an intruder were to try and get over this first initial, to add to that security would be to mimic what we're doing in the preschool wing in addition to the kindergarten wing. However, these set of doors would be open at all times and would be magnetic to a lockdown and magnetic to a fire drill. So let's say the lockdown button is initiated, these doors would swing shut. So that person is now into our, kind of where those staff bathrooms, or, sorry, our public kind of bathrooms are right away. There's not a whole lot of area for them to go. For those of you that have been in the building, there's also the entrance into the media center and our third, fourth, and fifth grade wing. You know what I'm talking about? So those doors are now magnetic. So in a lockdown, that button is pushed, those doors are swinging shut, and so are the kindergarten.
Something to mention, the reason that we came up with this idea in these corridors is we actually met with the original architects of the building. This was part of the original design of that building.
Yeah, they were supposed to.
They actually took it out, and I don't know if folks remember, but they used to have the gates that went across. It was a cost savings. Of course, you can't do that anymore. Fire marshals don't allow that. So it was super easy to come up with the idea, because it was actually designed to have this originally.
So this is the current entrance to the cafeteria. So when you walk in the building now, right off to your left, which is a very rare spot for a cafeteria to be, usually those are pushed inward in the building. But when you come in now, in the meantime, we've added some security features, and we've fobbed the door. So I'm sure if you've ever come for lunch, it's become a little cumbersome, which is the goal. Sorry, parents, but I just don't want you to be able to walk in there. And so what we want to do at this point is now, that's no longer an entrance for the cafeteria. I don't even want there to be doors that are locked. It's just a block wall.
Basically mimic the little, kind of the nook that's a little bit further down where they have benches. You'd have two of them.
So what that does then is, we currently have a media lab. This is Dion Coleman's media lab entrance. And so there are doors on the left-hand side of this. This would be turned into a double-door entry. And this is the current, on the right-hand side, there is a large wall. With removing that wall, it basically would open up another area in our cafeteria. It would be the entrance to the cafeteria. If you've ever been around for lunch, once they are done with lunch, they get into their four lines with their classroom teachers, and they do that right in our vestibule right now, like that large entryway. Parents are coming and going, and I have 100 kids out there. What that, this space would allow was a spot for that to happen that's not in the cafeteria per se. But you will be directly, just looking in and off to the right was where that, this would be the natural kind of hallway into the cafeteria.
I think another important piece of this is, the kids are now going in and out of the cafeteria in the secured part of the building. They're not intermixing with the public, or parents, or anyone coming in that first vestibule. They're completely in a secured area at all times, going in and out of the cafeteria.
And then, just so you know as a question, in the elementary school, we have two computer labs right now. With where we're at with devices and doing the testing in the classrooms right now, we would not lose our media lab. That would just be moved over to the other computer lab, which is on the other side of the media center. All right, I think, is this the last one, Dave? I think it is.
Yeah, I think it is.
So, is there anyone?
Questions? Comments? Concerns?
I have a question going back to...
Yeah.
That one.
This one?
And so, how do you deal with during the day students possibly coming out of those new doors?
Well, I don't anticipate that being an issue. I don't, haven't, we haven't decided on like what the hardware is on, what could be the hardware on those doors.
This could be, it could be fobbed on either side. I mean, we do have some options, but I just need to check with the fire marshal to make sure we're meeting all codes.
And we have that in a lot of areas in our building where the doors get shut and they can still be. So I guess it...
Really, we have it in every exterior door.
Because we can't lock them in. Yeah, we can't. Yep.
Yeah, I guess you're created in a secure location, but then if you have students or staff coming out of those doors, it's no longer secure. So that's why I was wondering what...
Correct.
Nope, that's a good question. And really, I don't feel like there would be any reason, aside from a student, that's wanting to go out those doors. Staff would have no reason to use those unless it's, you know, at the end of the day.
Well, and please keep in mind, by no means is this 100% secure, never gonna have a problem. This is to minimize. So, I mean, it's a great point, and it's a reality.
Yeah. The other question I had is, the current vestibule, would you take out that second door? Or you would still leave it in for heating and cooling?
Typically, I would, but it's a different size as you go further down. So if it was the exact same hallway, which is actually what I did before, I just took it. But that one goes all the way to the ceiling. It'd be more labor, more work, more time than just building a custom one that would fit right into the spot that it's supposed to be. So no, we would actually keep that in. And to be honest with you, with everything that we have hooked up there, we have the doorbell, the camera, everything. That's just another layer of security if we need it. So if we go into a soft lockdown, we have a situation, we can actually limit them to even not even coming through the first vestibule till they get buzzed in, then buzzed in a second time. So it's already there. Why touch it?
Well, I was hoping you were saying that. I thought, yeah, I heard you say that you were moving it out, so.
No, 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 I'm sorry. No. We definitely keep that there.
Hit that lunchroom one more time, would you?
Yep. Oops.
So you're gonna, you're gonna shut down the entrance to the cafeteria?
Yep.
And that'll now be blocked off? And they'll be coming in what used to be the lab entrance?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Because it bumps up right against the cafeteria.
And actually, if you go back, I can kind of, to where you have the main entry?
Oh.
You can, you'll be able to, right.
Well, that's where it's at.
So you'll go, you'll go right around the corner and basically come right back into the cafeteria. So your wall's gonna be there. So the kids will come in and go right in through the lab, the current lab.
So what you're saying is preschool will just have to go around them? Yep. They'll just have to walk around.
Yep.
It's good movement. Yes.
And so, a major reason why we would do that is just to seclude the kids from all the interaction that goes on in front of the doors and in front of the cafeteria.
Yeah. And, you know, in any circumstance when we're not entirely sure, you know, typically, people who are going to make a poor choice as an intruder are someone we know. Right? And so giving them that access to the building where then we now have to actually physically see that face would be able to kind of give us a little idea of what do we have going on for us, if that makes sense.
You know, it's a unique situation with the fact that the main office is centrally located in the building. I mean, that's what they used to do. I mean, so it's thrown a few challenges at us to be able to have a secure building, and...
And some of you were on the board when that initial quote came through, you know, upwards of $800,000.
To move the office.
Yeah, to physically move the office. Can people in the audience ask questions?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Mr. Montgomery.
How will this affect the building's use for other things like CFY basketball, J.O. volleyball? NINDOT just had a meeting there a week ago. From what I understand, everything's gonna be through that office. Is that office gonna be open?
So, so that's a good question, Dave. I'll let you, I'll let you answer that.
Those doors will be programmable, just like any other door. So if you're on this, if you have your events scheduled and there's times on there, you'll be able to have access after school hours. So it shouldn't affect it at all.
So you alluded to that $800,000 prior. When are we gonna talk about the cost of this?
With the numbers that we have right now, we're looking at $150,000 or under for everything on this project. Now, keep in mind, with the $800,000 project through our architects, it did not solve all of our problems as far as classroom space. It actually created a couple more issues with that price tag. So I was kind of out at that point. I mean, it was a lot of money. It didn't solve our problems. This was a process of coming up with a solution that was not a Band-Aid. It was a permanent fix. Made the building functional, but something that we didn't have to go back to. We keep the office where it's at. We keep our programming where it's at, which is important for this building to be able to have the programming where it's at right now. So it went back and forth, you know, between us and secretaries and getting everyone's input. It was months, you know, to come up with this ultimate plan. I know it looks super easy, but there's a lot of thought.
I think it looks good.
Can you talk a little bit about the fire doors that we discussed at the facilities meeting?
Sure.
That's a part of this plan, isn't it?
It is not.
That's separate from the...
That is separate. Yep.
That would be a separate pot of money withheld in safety.
So going back to the lunchroom, you mentioned the fire marshal. Would we have any issue with exits?
We would not have any exit issues. I still, you know, if this is something that we pursue, there's still some things I need to tie up as far as engineering, fire marshal codes, and things like that.
So after this presentation, this is what you're both recommending to the board?
Yes.
Other questions?
I think it's important to be proactive and not reactive.
I think this right here is the most bang for the buck. It's a permanent solution that fixes a serious problem.
Thank you.
Hmm, maybe. No. Ah, there we go.
Thank you.
Okay, reports and communication. We have no student rep here. Committee reports. Does anyone have anything for the cause? I think Katie said you had something.
Yeah, we had a GCD meeting on January 23rd. And just to let you all know, there is an All County Board meeting coming up in March. Right now, they were looking at the 18th, if that should change. Because they originally had it on our spring break week. But if that, they moved it to the 18th. If that should change, I'll come back and let you know. But that's when they're scheduled for the All County Board meeting. You'll be getting something more about that. Otherwise, it was just an organizational meeting. They talked a little bit about our Career Navigator. They are sharing that with Cannon Falls and Pine Island. And so that presentation was neat to see. So, but yep, that's the main thing.
Were you elected to any seat?
I am the treasurer, at least here, yes.
Anyone else? Do you have anything?
Well, I attended the community ed advisory board meeting, or advisory group, I guess. And Jake's not here. I, my notes flew out of my folder, so. I know there was some discussion about whether or not to have a printed catalog distributed, and they're doing that in the fall only, and some other things like that. But nothing else that I can think of right now. Had good attendance at the meeting. And then also, Ed Foundation is having, the auction is April 18th. And if you have any donations, they're accepting donations through March 13th. And you can contact Jill Medcraft with those. They're also looking for new board members, if anyone's interested in serving on that board.
Anyone else? Any other committee reports?
Negotiations. We've been making some progress. Plenty of meetings. We meet again tomorrow.
Facilities, we met, I think it was January 30th. And just kind of superintendent, Dave, kind of went over some priority lists for items wanted or needed. And Jeff, do you have any, anything you want to talk about in the facilities meeting?
No. Other than the fact, just the priority list, and then the presentation we went over with the facilities, or at least the secure entrance project, and then the secure, the fire doors that Anna was talking about is actually on each wing further into the building, and those do need to be replaced this summer per a fire marshal order. But those will come out of health and safety dollars. Currently, there's dropdown doors. Is that the best way to describe them, Dave?
Correct. Like a rolling garage door.
Right. And those need to be replaced and put in steel doors?
Yeah.
Steel door system in there that would fold shut in the case of a fire.
And a lockdown.
And a lockdown. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. Okay. Administrative board reports. Elementary school, we've got something here. Would you like to elaborate at all?
No, I don't think so. Just a busy month with, I love to read my calendar. And we're, you implemented some sleds at the elementary school, so it's been fun times. At least since.
Middle school, high school. Mr. Hodges?
Again, it's been real busy. The main thing, we had a really good cultural competency, staff development training at our last staff day, the end of the semester. It's been a pretty smooth transition to semester two. And Kirsten and I are already working on scheduling for next year. So that's kind of the projects right now.
Okay. Technology. I don't see a technology person. Do we have a report in there?
I think there was a report.
Yes, there was. Community ed activities? No, Jake?
No. Jake said he wasn't able to make it tonight.
Dave, do you have anything for us?
I've given you enough.
Yes, you have. Okay, soups report?
Yes, I got a couple of things here. Tomorrow, the admin team and I are resuming our discussions on the action plan for the strategic priorities. We hope to have that finished up and ready for the board meeting to start reviewing on the 24th. Is the fingers crossed moment. If not, then I would think that the March meeting would be, the first March meeting would be the one that we would go to. The final item that I have is, we are meeting again for the Magalas Tree family donation coming up. And we were looking to finalize that as well, to bring something to the board here relatively shortly, so. Now, if you guys have questions, that is pretty much all I have.
Okay. Moving on. Public input. Does anyone have anything they'd like to address the board with? Speaker may not address criticism toward individual district employees during input. Limited to three to five minutes, depending on how much time you think you need with that. Does anyone have anything for the cause? Moving forward. Nothing in old business, in new business, we have plenty. Consideration to reserve the elementary roof dollars for fiscal year '21 and moving forward.
I have broached this topic briefly with the board. And these were the dollars that were used for the facility roof lease over the past number of years. And that roof lease did come off in December of 2019. I would like to continue to use these dollars for facility dollars, and I would recommend using them for facility dollars, because we do have needs moving forward for projects like the one that we had seen from the presentation earlier tonight. And so there's immediate needs, and then there's more long-term needs, like roofing projects that will be coming up down the line here. And instead of wondering where we're gonna have that money to come from, we would have those dollars reserved in that account.
How much longer will those dollars be put in reserve for the elementary roof? I mean, what is the plan there?
Mr. Davis, a nose?
Well, in terms of how long to be in reserve, that'd be a board decision. In terms of how long we'll be receiving those, if you have about seven years left for the Inverge deal after this year, to receive those funds that are actually a payment in lieu of property tax for Inverge, they'll go on the taxable after that time. But like I said, in terms of what would be reserved, that'd be a board decision on where those funds would be allocated. Just a little background, about $310,000 is what the school district receives annually from Inverge. A portion of that is from the city of Cannon Falls. It has a slight inflationary model to it. And then the school itself has a deal with Inverge contract that is about $210,000 each year annually that comes to the school district. At the time that these funds came to the district, we had a need for an elementary roof. We were able to do that with a mechanism called a lease. Hard to say, you actually lease a roof, but we were able to do that. So we designated $160,000 of that, $310,000, to go to pay the debt service on that roof lease payment. In December of 2019, we made the final payment on that roof lease. We are able to do it early, because there was copper on the old roof that we were able to salvage and reduce the payment, lowered the debt payment structure on that lease, and that was paid for. In the current budget, and we proved this already at prior board meeting, the second payment was put into the budget, although we finished the payment schedule on the lease in December. So there normally would have been a second payment of about $79,000, which will go out in June. That is funds that you'll hear talk about later on in this meeting that are available now for the district for facilities. Since those funds were used for facility issues, and we're gonna have facility issues pop up randomly, and again, throughout this agenda, you'll see items that are facility-based, having no real strong reserve for things like facilities and operations, it might be a good idea to earmark those dollars each year for facility needs. It's hard to plan out when each MAF unit will go bad, when roof may leak, when XYZ, whatever, may break down. And those are hard things to budget for. And if there's a reserve built or dollars are set aside for facilities, it would help financially cover the district in a better position.
Dave, at one time at a facility meeting or at a general board meeting, one of our past board members spoke specifically about preventative maintenance. You have a maintenance budget, or I would guess you'd have a maintenance budget. Have you put anything into preventive maintenance? Or is it just something that you can't afford to do with all the other costs? Why don't we? No, that's not fair. We don't have a preventive maintenance budget. With this, this would kind of fit into that category, right?
We do now have...
We do now have a small preventive maintenance budget. It would be nice to increase it, to be able to be more comprehensive in our preventive maintenance. And this kind of money is exactly what that would be beneficial for. Yes.
And that's what Larry was talking about with the priority list, I would guess, or not?
Yep.
Questions?
I got a question for Josh. Going back to the leasing of the roof, it seems kind of funny that you lease a roof, but so, is it fair to say at that point, when we had to fix the roof, that we did have the money to pay for a full roof?
Right. So, in order for us to get the roof done at that time, we had to finance it. There was no way for us to pull and reserve and pay for that. It was, I believe, in the neighborhood of $1.6 million to do the roof. Definitely not an amount that we had reserved or in a fund balance to cover for. And one of the mechanisms we were able to use is a lease to cover that. So, it just happened to tie in perfectly when Inverge came into town, and we were able to work that deal with them. They were going to be essentially tax-free, but they needed to have the blessing of not only the city and the county, but the school as well. Without all three, they couldn't move forward. So, we were able to use those funds and essentially have that roof lease payment without having to put a burden on to taxpayers for that. Although, six, one half, there's the other. Once Inverge was back on the tax roll, it actually is tax money coming into the district. But no, at that time, we would not have had the ability to fund that roof without those dollars.
Thank you. In a past life, we had, we could levy the taxpayers for health and safety issues, which we've done in the past. Is that now out? Is that not available to do anymore?
It's rolled into LTFM, the Long Term Facilities Maintenance. And so, there's a chunk of that, that you still have the health and safety dollars, but they've really restricted health and safety over the years, especially since they put in the LTFM piece of it. There was a lot of things that you could have filed under health and safety, but they've really restricted that.
Any other questions?
Knowing what we have later on the agenda, it's, it's hard for me to reconcile that we're going to hold any money in reserve when we're looking, if we have that money and we're looking at making cuts. It's, I understand the benefit of having a reserve. I'm just not sure it's something that we can necessarily do in good conscience right now. Are there limits on what we can use that money for?
No, it's general fund money. So, it's undesignedated, if you will.
What would be the alternative if we didn't set aside funds would be my, I guess, my question? Do we just?
Well, I mean, does it have to be the full amount? Or, you know, we have a basic list of what, I guess, I would just like to see more planning behind it, rather than just, we're going to hang out of this money until we need it, because it kind of seems like we maybe need it in other places right now.
Sometimes we get into a position, I respect what you have to say, but we get into a position where we didn't plan in the first place for something that pops up. And I guess the dishwasher would be one of those things. We've, we've put baling wire and Scotch tape on it for a number of years because we couldn't afford the $50,000 or $60,000 or $80,000 that it takes. So, I guess, I would think that if we don't plan for these things, and the only way to plan for it is to use this, at this point, undesignedated money for things that we need to get done now and in the future. So, yeah, it's a hard one, for sure.
I guess, what I'm just not understanding is, like, this money that was coming in that was designated for the elementary roof, does that just go on indefinitely? I mean, you said there's a-
The 20-year contract with Inverge and the school district to receive those funds, in those 20 years, Inverge was, at that time, would start paying the regular property tax. In terms of what that dollar amount would be, you'd have to get a contact with Goodyear and the Quota County to see what sort of funding makes a book into that after year 20. I guess the, in terms of undesignedated and designated, how we kind of delineate the dollar, you can look at it as, we received $310,000, and we've already put $150,000 into this undesignedated fund, you know. And over the last 12, 13 years, we've designated $160,000 that we won't pay for the roof. Now, you're simply positioned here to decide if you want to keep that $160,000 as undesignedated, or if you want to designate it for something in the facilities. And by a sense, it kind of makes some validity to keep it in the facilities because that's what we use it for. We just to pay for a roof. And we're going to have facility needs throughout the district, whether it be in this building, the elementary, the CCC, things are going to happen that we're going to have funds for in facilities. So, even if it's a year-by-year designation of what's used with those dollars, it'd be good to delineate where we're going to put those funds, so we can plan, facility-wise, on our priority list, what needs to be taken care of, so we don't fall into a spot where we have another $11 million project to, to build up this now.
Other conversation on this?
So, is the, are we proposing to do this forever, or can we do it a year by year?
We can do it year by year.
Until it's used up, is it, until that amount is used up?
Once that amount, what you mean by used up, I'm assuming you mean when the Inverge-
Money stops?
Money stops, but then they'll go on the tax rolls, and we will get the tax money back. So, the 150 or 300, what, 310 would actually just switch over to the tax rolls and not come in as cash each year.
Would that be a like amount, do you think?
I think that's what Josh needs to figure out with the Goodyear.
It'd have to be a conversation with both county auditors to find out what they would be. And that's, again, assuming that they still do, which we hope that they wouldn't. Given that they are, we still receive the funding. If not, then there would be another chance for us to figure out how to find the $310,000 dollars and place it in our budget.
Was that your question?
Yeah, I just, I didn't want to designate everything to facilities year over year per year, if we know next year something else needs to-
Yeah, when you set your budget every year, is when you reserve that, and we can have that as a line item to reserve that money again.
So, what you're saying is, we wouldn't commit that $150,000 for the duration of the, of the seven-year period? Or we'd work on a one-to-one basis, or?
We're just asking, or I, I'm asking for it to be designated for FY '21, so that you can look at it from an aspect of, we have immediate facility needs-
Oh, yeah, because-
For this next year.
It says "and" moving forward, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, and-
Because it makes sense for me, yes, we designate it.
Yeah, and that is-
This year moving forward, '21, but-
Right. It is a year-by-year choice. Yeah, sorry for the confusion on that. So, you can make, if you do make a motion to approve it for next year, you can just have it be just for next year, and we can have it line item, or year, year over year after that.
I feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was going to add.
You know, it sounds to me like you have a pretty existent list of priorities.
Oh, yeah.
And some of those need to be taken care of immediately. So, I-
Well, I think, we're already looking at this, the elementary school project taking the majority of those funds, so-
Well, the dishwasher, too.
And the dishwasher. So, it's basically eaten up. And so, when we say going forward, yes, we can vote on it year after year, but I think we have to have the logic of creating a maintenance fund for that rainy day, because every year, something's going to go.
It always does.
It always does. So, our fund balance doesn't warrant doing it, coming out of the general fund. So, I think this is where the logic part of it has to come into play, to really set the plan.
But I like the idea of being, I like the idea of being able to vote on it each year, just in case something comes up in a different, in a different aspect that we need to take care of, and it's not tied to facilities, because we voted on it.
One way to look at it is, this is general fund money, so you can put your dollars wherever you want to in a year, you know?
But if we voted on it moving forward, I feel like it would be-
Yeah, but, but boards change, and so then they can undo that, too. I mean, that was, that was bad wording on my part.
Sure, sure.
Yep. And so, we'll, we'll put it down as, if you want to, FY '21. And I, and I would suggest, and I do understand what you're saying, because sometimes you may need to actually have the flexibility to put it into something else the following year. But I would, I would highly suggest that you do have that mindset of, of having the facilities in the forefront of that, because there are stuff that will continue to arise over the years.
Would there be a way to, in the budget for future, like, to create a preventive maintenance plan within the, the facility's budget?
I think that's one of the things that we're looking at for an action plan.
Okay.
And I'll discuss that more when we present that-
Okay.
As a way to create and engage with a group that can help us design how and when we need to look at those sort of things.
Sure.
And where to apply those dollars moving forward, but that's in the action planning.
Okay. It's difficult then to feel like we're making an informed decision here without that plan, without knowing what we're going to be looking at going forward. I feel like we're kind of putting ourselves in a corner by approving some of these things without knowing what our action plan looks like. I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse a bit.
Yeah, and, and the, that action plan, well, actually, the safety of this, the safety being the highest priority in a building, this is the one, number one identified item by our admin team bringing forward. And if, and if the board doesn't want to go that route and wait till the action plan, that's fine. You can set the money off to the side. That's still an option. But this was the number one priority that the admin team collectively came together with on their list of priorities.
The, the immediate need that we have appears to be this dishwasher, which we may discuss later on. Yes. So, when I look at this fiscal year '21, is that dishwasher money that we may discuss here part of the '20, or is it part of '21?
I believe it was last meeting.
So, the dishwasher would be out of fiscal year '20.
Yeah, it'll come out of this year yet. So, that would be-
Second payment of the roof that we had budgeted for, but we didn't need because we were able to pay off the roof on December.
So, then the fiscal year '21, what we're looking for is to funding the safety project.
Yeah, that'd be July, after July 1st. So, for the next school year, it'd come out of those dollars.
And that's looking at the, like, $160,000 roughly?
David said, what, be, and then $150,000 or less?
Yeah.
Right.
So, realistically, Jeff, going back to your comment about being able to, the general fund monies, so, just take, for example, we vote on it this year, we vote on it next year, we're stockpiling, we don't have that issue. At some point, we are able to unrestrict those funds and put them back.
Yeah, you can undesignate them or unreserve them, and move them back for the following year, if you feel comfortable with the amount that we have after addressing our issues.
It would strictly be board action. It's not like reserving funds for severance or health and safety. There's nothing that's tied to MDE saying these funds are designated only for this, as appointed by board action. So, that could be, any given year, you could restrict or unrestrict those dollars for, for that.
So, my point is, is that even though it's set aside, we still have the ability, the ability down the road to bring them back for something that may, that's not maintenance that came up.
So, do we have a motion to consider reserving elementary school roof dollars for 2021?
I'll make the motion to.
I would second as amended, to remove and moving forward.
To remove and moving forward? You okay with that, Bill?
Yep.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Brenda. We've really discussed this already, but does anybody have anything they'd like to pop in here?
I'm comfortable with doing that. But I also like the idea of seeing some sort of a plan come up now, for sure, like, a little, like, further out than just one year at a time of what facilities is looking for, to come up before we would vote on this again next year.
I think, right now, we're trying to get our feet underneath of us and get on top of the ball with some of these things.
Oh, that's good.
Yep.
Well, I think you have to be careful with that, too, because then it becomes a wish list, too, and then you're, you're funding everything that comes on the list.
Right. The wants and needs.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of reserving the elementary roof dollars for fiscal '20, '21, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
That passes on a 5-1. Consideration to approve, to go out for quotes on the elementary safety and security project.
This is just simply to allow us to keep planning and get more precise numbers that we can bring back to you, now that you've reserved those dollars. It makes sense, because if it, if you weren't going to reserve it, then it's kind of fruitless to go out to continue to get numbers, because we don't simply have the dollars. But now that we have the dollars reserved, we can bring you those back. Dave, when do you think is a good timeline to have those available? March?
Yeah, it's tough to tell. I, I gotta dig into it.
March, April timeframe.
March, April timeframe.
And then, we would present those numbers to you, and then ask for a final blessing to get it scheduled for this summer to do the work.
Okay, I would look for a motion to approve the quote process as shown.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote process for the-
Katie, on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Larry. Other discussion?
In, in funding this project, I know we're talking about using the dollars solely for that, but has there been any consideration of looking for available grant money, or talking to the education foundation to see if this is something that they could help us pay for, as opposed to using all of those funds that we've now decided to reserve for one project?
You can certainly ask those organizations and look for grant dollars.
Once upon a time, they were new and innovative. Was there a designation for the foundation? But I guess it wouldn't hurt to ask.
Are there grants for safety, though?
The state had a large grant process a couple of years ago that very few schools got to be a part of, because they had to apply for it, and then they were randomly drawn. The state is now taking up the question about whether they should just allocate all of those dollars evenly across the state. And so, instead of funding five large projects, they're now giving out small dollar amounts to every school, which that, I think, will be coming up in this current legislative session. In my last school, we had myself and a professional company that was part of our architects down in Southland looking for grants for safety. There isn't a whole lot out there without having to spend a whole lot of your own dollars. If we, if, if it was a 50-50 piece, if it was 75, if the total project was 150, and we put in 75, that would be great, but we just, we didn't see anything like that out there at the current time. Doesn't mean that there isn't anything out there now. So, can certainly take a look. And you were saying something, Brenda, I think I cut you off.
Well, I just didn't hear what you said.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and we can certainly ask the Ed Foundation and other groups, like the PTO in the community. So.
Okay. All in favor of the approval to go out for quotes for the elementary safety and security project, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes, 6-0. Consideration to approve a resignation.
Jake Winchell has tendered his resignation for the AD and Community Ed position, and he will be taking another position, position in another district. I'd like to thank Jake for his time, efforts, and energy that he's put into the district over the years, and wish him well.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve.
Remove.
Motion by Bill, second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? We thank, we thank Jake for his service. He's an alumni. We hate to see alumni leave, but he's moving up and moving on.
Still going to live here, though, I suppose.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of approving the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Consideration to post and hire that same position, Activities Director and CE position.
Make motion.
Brenda, on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion?
I would be interested in kind of- I would be interested in kind of, I would be going to be looking for a full-fledged community ed director right off the bat with licensure.
That would be the...
The goal?
The goal of getting that.
So if we're unable, we would have to come back and reorganize it?
Yeah, some districts, there's many different facets to that. You could come back, and if we can't find a director, we would have to probably look for an outside entity to help with the director position. Doesn't mean that you can't have a coordinator doing the work inside, but have the director be outside.
And sign off.
And sign off. And then I need to...
Yeah, that's how we did that one. Jake started.
Yeah, I think Jake started that way. And then we also have the opportunity to send somebody back to get that license. I have to read the statute closer. We are right on the bubble of not needing a community ed director licensed person where the superintendent could cover that.
Because of enrollment?
Because of enrollment and the size of the district. So I need to dig more into that.
So we're starting off looking for a full-fledged.
Yeah, yep.
Jeff, do you think it's pretty common to have the activity director and the community ed position combined like that, or do you think it would be harder to feel that way?
No, I've seen it in multiple other districts. The flexibility that's required for meetings during the day and outside of the district, the facilities pieces that they use together to coordinate all of that is usually good coming out of the same office.
Okay, because it was the athletic director position. Those combined with community ed.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor of the posting and hiring of this position, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve the elementary dishwasher quotes. We have three, I think.
And I'm going to turn this over to Dave briefly here to discuss those three and the advantages and disadvantages of them and which one that we currently use.
We've got three separate quotes for the dishwasher. Once again, this is a project that's been discussed for quite some time. We're to the point where we have no choice, that it just simply needs to be replaced at this point. The two quotes that I was happy with was from Rapids Food Service and also Commercial Kitchen. We also got a third quote directly from Hobart. The problem with them is it wasn't a turnkey quote, and I want turnkey. I just, I want project done. I don't want all the extra, oh, you got to pay for this and that. So I kind of put them out of the, because you can't get a solid number. You just don't know what it's going to be. Commercial Kitchen is our current provider for all of our service and our kitchen equipment. And what I'm looking to do is try and get approval from the board for the, to not exceed The reason that I'm saying that is because the Rapids and the Commercial Kitchen quotes are within $465 of each other, so they're very, very close. If the board gives approval, I'm more worried about the timeframe, when it can be done. So I have no preference to either one of these companies. They're both very good. They're both fine. I just want to be able to meet a deadline and get a timeframe done. They'll have to build the machine and do that kind of stuff. So they were close enough, and Commercial Kitchen was actually the only one that actually came out and took measurements, which I'm very comfortable with, too.
Folks, what would you like? Dave would recommend a motion to approve this, to approve the quote subject to the cap of $63,304.85. That's his recommendation. Questions for Dave? Comments? Motions?
Did the Rapids Food Service, was that a match bid on there? Is that all-inclusive for those?
Correct, yep.
We don't really have experience with them or haven't worked with them in the past?
No, I haven't personally done any business with them.
They didn't need to come out and take measurements or anything?
I've talked to other contractors. There seems to be no issue. They're a very qualified, good company. No issues at all.
Okay.
So how is it that they're able to give a valid quote without taking measurements? I find that interesting.
Well, the important part of these quotes is the simple fact that we're going with the Hobart product, which is matching the, as close to the measurements of what we currently have. Something specific about Hobart is the simple fact that they keep their equipment very similar for ductwork and stainless steel and electrical and draining. Hobart's very specific about that, so that's why, and not to mention it's a good quality product, which we currently have and has run for a long time with, you know, incredible usage. So I think with the current equipment that we have and the model numbers compared to what we're purchasing, they have all the diagrams in front of them.
Okay.
They know what they're getting into. I'd just like to have that person come out because I'm just weird like that.
Well, I would be a little weird like that, too, but so...
I mean, just for them to actually get their eyes on it. I don't want any surprises.
So for the $460 odd, do you think using Commercial has any benefit?
Um, yeah, I just think that they're, you know, they do all of our work currently. So I think the benefit is, is they know us, they know the building, they know what's expected. They came out. We had a face-to-face. I feel comfortable. That's the benefit.
I guess I'd be more inclined to just make the motion of Commercial.
I would have no problem with that.
It's okay.
There is a motion by Bill and a second by Brenda to essentially accept the quote from Commercial Kitchen Services, Inc., correct?
Correct.
Other discussion?
Does that come with any kind of a warranty or lifetime guarantee so that we're...
Lifetime?
Like, well, not lifetime, but like, you know, what is the warranty on it?
Comes with a bailing wire and...
The warranty is on the model that we decide to go with.
Okay.
Is there any service contracts that come with this price?
It would be whatever's under the warranty. They wouldn't exceed anything that's under what the mandatory warranty is.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor to approve Commercial Kitchens as the winner, I guess, of the dishwasher quote, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consideration to approve the annual compliance AIPAC resolution vote?
I've invited Mr. Adam Nelson here, who is in charge of our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, and he will be speaking first about that and then describing what this resolution vote is coming tonight.
Adam, you have the floor.
Can I say something first?
Oh, yeah.
I have to step out for a few minutes. It's Parents' Night at Basketball, so I'll be back, but there's some things that are a little more important. Don't be late.
Okay, Adam?
Hi, this is Adam Nelson, beginning students here at the middle school and high school. And coming into this, I guess into this role of working with Indian education here, I guess a little bit of my background is I worked at football fighters, a principal in Grand Marais, local county schools, and I worked pretty closely with the Graham Portage community and became very involved with their local Indian education committee. So in a lot of places in the state, it's not actually referred to as, the official name is Local Indian Education Committee, or LIEC is kind of the shortened name, is what most of the educational directors around the state refer to it as. For the state purposes, they call it the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. And so just a slight background, one of the, nationwide, one of the student population groups that with the lowest graduation rates in the United States is, are American Indians. And in the state of Minnesota, about five years ago, I believe, was hovering between 40 and 50 percent. And so what the state of Minnesota did is they expanded their Indian Education Department to promote and strengthen positive experience for American Indian students throughout the state of Minnesota. And since doing so, they've increased the graduation rate over 10 percent. And I believe it's up over 50 percent now compared to what it was in the past. So having said that, one of the things that the Indian Education Department of the state of Minnesota has done is any school population that has 10 or more students identified as American Indian must have an LIEC group, parent advisory group, meet annually and determine if the school is making adequate progress for American Indian students in the school. If you have 10 or more students, you have to have the committee. If you have more than 20 students identified as American Indian, then you are eligible through to develop an Indian education, Indian education program plan, and you're eligible to receive up to $20,000 for your first, the first 20 students that you have to develop a plan to promote and strengthen education for native students that are in your school. After 20 students, I believe it's $348 per student. So right now, where it sits after starting the whole process of making sure students were accurately identified in our schools, we have 24 American Indian students in our school right now. And so we've worked over the last, basically over the last year almost, in trying to make sure that we've identified all of our students who are of Native American descent, who are identified as Native American, and have 24. And so we've developed our committee. The committee started out pretty small. We started in November, which is Native American Heritage Month. And we had a parent and a student that became part of that particular community. Our next meeting, we had three particular members. Bill Thompson is part of that group. Unfortunately, wasn't able to meet last month with us, but there was a school board meeting assigned that night. And so we're meeting monthly throughout the school, throughout the school year is our plan. So moving forward, I will find out within the next week or two whether or not the district will be eligible to receive those dollars this year for Indian education programming. But next year, we will basically be guaranteed almost $22,000, I'm sorry, $21,000, roughly about $21,400 for Native American programming. Some of those programs, that programming might include designating an individual or staff member to be a check and connect. Career in college planning was kind of the big focus that our parents and student that was on that committee kind of wanted us to really focus on that. Most of our American Indian students are at the middle school or high school level. 21 of our 24 students are at the high school, at the middle school or high school. And so at our last meeting, we also looked at student data. And so in order to determine if a school is in compliance or a vote of concurrence is, are we meeting, are we currently meeting the needs of American Indian students in our school? So I had to go back and look at student data, and some of that data included daily attendance, academic, or grade point average, MCA scores, reading, math, science, and are students on track to graduate when they leave here? And so bringing that data back to our committee that met last month, we determined this year that the school is in compliance and making adequate progress for the native students that are in our school. And so that is why this vote comes up once a year, every year. Usually it's brought to the school board in February, and then it's worded upon sent in to make sure that the school is in compliance. Last year, we did have more than 10 students that were identified, but we didn't have any sort of committee that was developed last year. So it was tasked, I was tasked with that process this fall because I didn't have that background prior to. So that's why, that's what this compliance document is for.
Questions for Adam?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll explain.
Thanks, Adam.
So we need a motion to approve the, the annual compliance resolution vote.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Anna. Any other discussion? Resolution vote.
And I'm not sure exactly what needs to be read. I mean, I see it on this page.
I think it's just the first thing underneath the option one where it says the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee has issued a vote of concurrence. So you're accepting...
Just right there?
Yeah, you're accepting...
Just that paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay. "We, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, issue a vote of concurrence. We attest that the school board and the school district are compliant with Minnesota statutes and that the school board and/or district are meeting the needs of American Indian students." So we'll take a vote. Where is that here? Anna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a 5-0 vote. Thank you, Adam. Consideration to approve a list of 1920 spring assistant coaches. Page nine shows you the upcoming spring coaches. I will abstain from that. My name is on that list.
Jake had made a comment today. He wanted you guys to know that this isn't a complete list, but it's kind of like the fall list, that we're still working on it here, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Katie to approve the list as shown.
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Further discussion? All in favor of the approval of the list as shown, say aye.
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 Aye abstain. That passes by a 4-0 with one abstention. Okay, consideration to approve the fiscal year '21 list of budget reductions items.
The list in the agenda. The reductions on the left and the additions are on the right with the net change highlighted in the bottom right-hand corner there.
Jeff, I would ask that as we go through this, you just go through all of them.
Okay.
And then we can discuss them individually. Otherwise, we could get bogged down in one or two of them, let's say, along the path and not give complete discussion to all of them.
Sure. That sounds good. We'll start off at the top left-hand part of the list with the 2.0 FTE elementary positions. What I've done, and the board can take a few of these sheets here, is compiled numbers that show where those FTE would come from and what the current numbers are and what the numbers would be like moving forward. Anna, want to get that if you want to pass it through out into the crowd there?
Do you want to leave one for Larry?
Oh, yeah, we'll need one for Larry, too. And I'll put this up on the screen as well. So currently, the 1920 Cannon Falls Elementary School current class sizes shows the grades on the left, number of students, the number of current sections, the class section size, and the district guidelines. Now, the district guidelines, if you remember, I believe were put in place in May of 2018.
I think they were 2014 and they were updated in 18?
Yeah, updated in 18. So they're put in place in 14 and updated in 2018. And so that is the document that we are using to base the district guidelines off of. As you can see, we have some class sizes and section guidelines that are falling into the guidelines and some of them that are not. And so the idea would be to reduce two sections in the elementary going from four to three next year in the third and fourth grades and bringing those class sizes back into the guidelines, therefore preserving the lower elementary grades that seem to be need a little bit more nurturing, I guess is the best way to put it, as they are growing. little bit more nurturing, I guess, is the best way to put it, as they are growing. Fifth grade still would not fall into the guidelines, but reducing a section there would cause it to go over the guidelines. So, we opted to leave it where it is at currently. So, that is the explanation for the two elementary class size reductions. Now, as we are discussing these reductions, keep in mind that there is a process that when we say third and fourth grade teachers, that doesn't mean that a third and a fourth grade teacher is going to get reduced. That is dependent on a lot of different things and moving and shifting by licensure sometime.
Seniority?
Seniority, resignations, retirements, non-renewals. The list goes on. And so, what would happen as we go through this, the names that are not behind the FTEs will be brought to the next board meeting for your approval for either resignation, non-renewal, ULA, unrequested leave of absence. There's, there's a whole list of items that we need to have happen before we get to names. So, please keep that in mind as well. And the idea behind, I should have said this at the very beginning, but in looking at these cuts, the idea is to limit the effect that we've had on kids. And no matter, obviously, what you do in schools when you make reductions is that somehow you are going to affect kids, but to affect them directly versus indirectly is really what we took a look at doing. So, keep that in mind as well. Going back to the list, the elementary front door position, that is the security desk, if you will, up front. If the board, obviously, you, you did approve us to move forward with getting quotes, but if you give a final approval to that project, that position would go away for next year and would not be needed. So, that would be a part of the cuts. However, there is a buffer built in to the final numbers in case that position is needed for whatever reason for next year. Two FTEs for TOSSAs. TOSSA stands for Teacher on Special Assignment. We do have two of those currently, right now, providing and doing administrative work. Those two would be reduced and replaced with, on the right-hand side, an associate principal that has more days built into their contract and also more flexibility with license. And we would re, reshuffle administrative duties to meet those needs. High school media is self-explanatory. The 1.0 FTE middle school, high school is due to class sizes as well. The tech stipend is in relation to what one of the TOSSAs gets, and so, that would not be needed anymore as well. The high school dish room, that person resigned earlier this year in September and we were, I asked if it was necessary to replace it. And so, we've been monitoring that position, and we've been getting along fine without it so far this year. And so, we are not replacing that position. A part-time secretary has recently retired, and with that, we would not replace that position. We would reorganize our secretarial duties district-wide and reallocate duties to them. On the right-hand side, the thing I haven't talked about is the three high school sixth assignments, and that is tied into that middle school, high school. So, that is basically a partial reduction in that to help manage scheduling pieces that need to take place. And so, when you add up the reductions plus the additions, you get a net of $347,200. Keep in mind that, and that is dependent on the start item on the left-hand side there.
Can you explain the 1.0 FTE middle school, high school one a little bit, how it's tied to the, is there any way to explain that? I guess I don't understand.
It's class sizes again. So, we're reducing one position to help us start managing class sizes coming in.
But the adding of the three, the six-grade assignments, would that be added?
So, basically, if you look at a 1.0, it's basically a .4 reduction because they teach five classes per se. And so.
But for reduction, you're adding.
Yep. And so, when you do the math on that, you're, you're cutting a full one and then adding back just over half of it.
Okay.
To help with scheduling.
Okay.
I didn't know how else to explain that.
How about the, how about the media?
Yeah.
The what?
The media.
High school media?
Reduction.
Is that the library?
Yep. So, that would be a full-time media reduction.
Would you still have a full-time library, librarian, or person in here?
We would have coverage in here. I don't know if Tim can explain that a little bit more with the media?
We'd figure out internally with supervision on how to cover maybe the operation of the media center. And then, the piece that we'll figure out if the reduction is made is how to cover updating the library catalog and everything. And then, of course, the courses.
How many courses is it that is taught by the media specialist?
Two hours a day.
Two hours a day?
The, the FTE elementary people. We have in policy numbers that we haven't dealt with in the past, or we've just kind of glossed over and kept those small class sizes. It's probably caused us a little bit of problem financially by doing that. I would guess that's the why we're, we're reducing those two, keeping in line with what our policy is.
But they're guidelines, so not a policy. There's a difference between, we're not beholden, this is just a guideline recommendation. We're not beholden to these numbers. This is just a guideline for what we should be considering for class sizes. We're not held to that. This isn't a firm house, as far as I understand.
Nope, it's a guideline.
I don't like the media, the high school media cut. That's come up before, and I think it's a really important role to have someone in here who's, you know, curating the collection and as a resource for students and serves the whole school or all the middle school and high school. So, it goes beyond just one classroom. And if that position, so what about the two, the two classes that person teaches, those would be redistributed or?
Yeah, we would redistribute those classes elsewhere.
I just don't think you'd have the oversight of the library and the reading materials and the resource of librarian. It's very important to the school, I think.
Prior, prior to our last meeting, we had a finance committee meeting. It lasted a couple of hours. And we had a number of people, including some community members involved, that are, weren't a finance, I guess. And at that time, they okayed, I think, a minimum of $310,000 was what their, their vote was. And I will tell you, it was a grudging vote because nobody likes to go through things like this. After that conversation was over, can you tell, can you tell us what the process was to come to this conclusion as far as consortium thinking or how you went about this?
Worked with our administrative team to identify cuts, and then the principals and I took that process down to a minimum level to create what we came out with tonight. A lot of it is looking at the guidelines that you have set forth in the district to make sure that we're following in those guidelines, which obviously, in a lot of the cases, we weren't following in the guidelines. And when you, when you start taking a look at that large of a number for 310,000, it, it's more than just supplies and, you know, the pencils and erasers. It's also looking at, you don't want to hurt student programming because that is the life blood of the school. And so, if you start cutting student programming, you start losing kids. You know, we could easily, an easy cut would be, well, let's just reduce all athletics. You know, that should be secondary academics is first. You reduce all athletics, then you have kids scattering everywhere to the neighboring schools, and you're going to compound your problem. So, when you start taking a look at doing cuts, you have to do it so that you minimize the impact to your student program and identify those areas where we can maybe do things differently than the way we have been and save dollars from that standpoint. And when we talk about, you know, reducing the TOSSAs and bringing back an associate principal, we're still getting the same thing, but for less money. When we start doing something else within the reductions, we're looking at doing things differently. Things may not always work the same way as, as they did, but we would still have the same outcome. We can't be afraid to make changes from that aspect. Does that answer your question?
Kind of. One of the, one of the conversations that we had in this meeting that was that our enrollment is declining. And I, I think Mr. Hodges' comment, you'll have to reinforce that, was, you know, let's make sure that we have some, we do have some programs that draw kids in, right? So, we need to be careful at the same time to, to not, not reduce the programs that are bringing our students in to maintain the same number of students we have overall. Is that fair to say?
Yep, that's exactly what I said. Well, I think another piece of that, too, what makes us attractive to families that are looking at Cannon Falls are our class sizes. And I think if we move those around and, and reduce sections, we're increasing class sizes, and you just mentioned compound, you're compounding your cut. If they're looking at us versus another school and they see that, that another school, I, I see what our guidelines are. I also see that if we add two kids in third grade and a kid in fourth grade next year over the summer, we're at that 25 number. And I realize the guideline says 24 to 28, but at the top of the guidelines, it says a clear message to incoming families about our dedication to class size under 25. So, the guidelines don't even match up with our, what we say our dedication is. Are we going to be missing out on the potential to increase enrollment by cutting sections at this point?
I'm not sure if this is an answer, but I do know that my eighth-grade grandson had, his class, his, when he was in fourth grade, they reduced that by one with the understanding that we were four away or five away at that time from needing one more educator. So, I think it ended up that we had five new kids move in specifically in that class. So, in the 11th hour, we did hire another educator. So, I, I'm not sure the numbers are really set in stone because we had to, we did have to comply with our.
Guidelines?
Yeah, original guidelines. So, I don't know what, what time do we hire, you know, if we get a, if we get a midsummer influx?
Well, personally, that's a big thing for me is the elementary school and making sure those class sizes are at a decent, decent size. But when we're talking third, fourth, and fifth, I think 25 is a very acceptable class size comparative to, like, the Twin Cities. Like, my nephew has 32 in his class. So, I, I think just, you know, and he's in third grade. And, and so, I, I think that 25 is an attractive number in the upper levels. I wouldn't want to see that in those, in the K1, 2, because I think those are the more formative cognitive, your cognitive abilities get better at third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and as you're getting ready to come up to the bigger classrooms in the middle school, high school.
Jen, could you speak at all to the class sizes, maybe in relative terms, or what it looks like from the elementary principalship?
You know, sure. I, so, in May of 2018, we had revisited the guidelines and paying close special emphasis to K1 and 2. And I, and I don't, I don't think what's projected and what our hopeful plan is deviates much from that. It's really, I mean, if you look at what's happening right now in first and second grade, it's, it's well below. So, you know, in a perfect world, we would have class sizes of 10, and, and that, you know, is a selling point. But I also think there are other things in our elementary that are selling points, too. Everyday quiet is one.
Huge.
It's, it's huge. That gets the attention, sometimes even over a class size. I, you know, my daughter's sitting in a third-grade classroom right now of 30. So, to me, this still shows that we have our normal students in K1 and 2 as a priority. It's not, you know, and when you talk a little bit, Anna, about how many students need to move in, if our sections are at 24 and 25, we would need all three of those sections to be at 28 to go up. Is that correct? That, well, that's the maximum for the class sizes, but the purpose on this guideline says a message to incoming families about our dedication to class under 25. 28 kids in a class is not dedication to 25 kids. Yes. Yep. And, and as a parent, if I'm coming in and I'm looking at that and I'm saying, oh, you're telling me that you, your class sizes are going to be under 25, and I have a fourth grader, and now it looks like their class is going to be 28, that, that's kind of a bait and switch. I don't think that that's a fair thing to promote. So, either our guidelines need to change or we need to practice what we preach with our class size.
I have a question for you, Jen. So, we're looking at third and fourth grade cuts. So, is it, have those numbers changed the last two years?
Very little. Add minus two, add two, minus two.
So, would it be fair to say that these numbers have been carried for the last two to three years?
That stay consistent?
Yeah, I would say, you know, it, it really, it really just depends.
Yeah.
Some grade level's a little bit different. I mean, I think I'm up, you know, four or five students this year in kindergarten than I was when I started. But it's really hard to say.
Well, I guess my point being that these numbers, they could have been, a section could have been cut a couple of years ago and still been within the guidelines, and we wouldn't be talking about it today, which then also makes a reference to what Bob said about the fund balance. So, I think we're still getting within our guidelines. And, you know, when you look at it, you know, first grade, we're, we're, we're right at the bottom. Second grade, we're low. Third and fourth, we're, we're in there. And fifth grade's still low. So, I think we're being efficient with our tax dollars, in my opinion, on this particular I mean, and I think, Bob, you mentioned, we did that when I was on the board before. We had to hire because there was an inflow. It's not like you're cutting it and you're sticking to it. If numbers come up, we have to adjust and modify.
I think it's difficult to base cuts on something that is consistently fluctuating. If we're getting close to the top of our guideline or where we want to keep our class size, are we always going to be at a point where, are we going to hire? Are we not going to hire? That, that lack of consistency, especially at the elementary level, is concerning to me. I, I guess I would like to see us focus on our budget, keeping our budget in line with things that are less up and down, that are more consistent. that are less up and down, that are more consistent, that are more fixed. It's hard to say, oh, well, we'll cut this year, but we're going to need to add one next year. Okay, we cut from third grade this year. The numbers still aren't matching up, so we're going to need to cut from fifth grade to, you know, fourth grade, fifth grade next year. And what happens then? You know, I had heard or seen numbers about our incoming kindergarten class being really large. So are we going to have to add a teacher every year as they go up? And what if the class behind them is twenty kids smaller? Are we going to cut all of the teachers that we just hired?
I think what you're looking at is redistributing.
Right.
Within your building. A lot of schools do that, especially smaller schools.
Well, and I think that's the point that we have to take into account with our admin team and supporting them in the decision here because, like you're saying, there's licensure behind all of this that, and seniority that, you know, you're not seeing here. And so when you have a class that comes in, like kindergarten, maybe it's a hundred kids. We haven't seen a hundred kids for years. We're going to have to adjust, and there's going to be someone that can teach kindergarten. And now we move everyone around, and it's Jen's responsibility to figure that out.
The other concern I have here is it feels like we're just accepting the fact that our enrollment is flat or declining. I yet to hear, and I realize we have a plan that's coming, but are we doing anything to actively increase enrollment? Or do we just have to accept the fact that we're going to keep dwindling to a point that we have one section of every grade?
I think it ebbs and flows, and you go up and down, probably from, you know, just every, you know, even with my own kids' grades, I know my youngest one's, his class size is a lot smaller than my older two. And I think it just is a natural occurrence every so many years, especially from what I'm hearing. The kindergarten class went up a little bit, so maybe next year's kindergarten class will go up even higher. I mean, it may just be just one of those, like, little flows things because when you do have higher class sizes, you have higher tech, or higher money coming in for those kids, too. So when you're adding more kids, you're adding more money to what we are receiving to be able to pay for the other teacher.
I understand what you're saying about redistributing and that it's, we're just moving people around, but is that providing our kids with the best education? If you have a teacher that's teaching first grade one year, and then they go to teach fifth grade, and then they're going to go back to second grade, is that moving around that lack of consistency? Are they, I understand they have licensure, and they have the knowledge, and I trust our teachers have the ability to do it. But if they're teaching second grade and they're teaching second grade for ten years, isn't that better than having them move around?
I don't know.
I think some of the moves would be from second to first or second to third as opposed to kindergarten to fifth grade. And I think there's that discussion that takes place within Jen and her teachers on that, when those types of situations happen. Keep in mind, you know, we're talking about, and we want, we want more and more kids coming here, and it'd be great if we actually grew and we had to make those decisions about adding a staff back or whatever. But what happens if we have a discussion of if we lose six kids and we drop even further down? We can only hire, you know, we can hire all the way up until the first day of school and even after the first day of school theoretically. But we can't let go of staff after June thirtieth. And so we have to keep that in mind as well. Because the staff that you start with on July first, you have until June thirtieth to follow you.
And I like what you're saying about increasing enrollment. I think that we should do more to entice people to come here. But I think it would have to be, okay, we make this sacrifice, or whatever you want to call it now.
It is a sacrifice.
Yes, and we start, we start working tomorrow on how we're going to increase enrollment so that we can pull people back.
And I think the other thing that is maybe not being discussed here is, I understand that these are numbers on a page. But I have a kid going into third grade next year, and right now she's in a class of seventeen. Next year, she might be in a class of twenty-five. That's a pretty significant change to expect out of a bunch of eight-year-olds. I get it. They have to adjust, and we have to do what's right for the budget, but we also need to consider doing what's best for them. And I don't know that jumping from seventeen to twenty-five means that they're going to get the same things that they are used to getting in their classroom environment right now.
You know, I keep thinking that we're going to, the inevitability for our district is probably going to be some type of request from the community for more funds, referendum. We don't like to talk about it. We don't even like to plan for it because it's kind of off the table in an election year because those things are doomed to failure. But it has to be what we looked at, or we look at, and we simply can't go out to the community and say, hey, we need more money. What we have to do is make an earnest effort to show them that, yeah, we went to step one here, and we made some reductions, we made some cuts. Did they hurt? They hurt us all. But is it something that we need to show the community? The majority of people in our school district are geographic, don't have any kids here. And it's that way in every small town. The majority of people don't have kids in their school district. So are we dealing with those people enough to say, you know, no, we didn't make any cuts, but we'd really like you to open up your wallet again? That's a real hard pitch to make, and we've had to do that in the past. And, yeah, I'm not sure if there's a right answer. I know that this hurts us all. And I could tell on our last vote, we had a tough time even making a motion in a second on it. And Bill and I and Brenda have been through this before, and it's about the most distasteful thing. We asked the administrators, step up and make some recommendations to us. And you live in that world where you are the professionals, and we're asking you to come forth and make some recommendations to us. And you put in, you put in the time and effort on it, and it looks like, you know, if we're not agreeing or we're having this open discussion this year, what's going to happen next year when our plan is to possibly do this again? The next step is going to be hurtful. So, and that could be a whole nother set of circumstances, and we could be sitting at this table next year in more of a combative role with the community. But we have to make some decisions here. And this will be a tough one. Next year will be a tough one. A referendum will be a tough one. So all of this is just great conversation, but I don't know how we're going to achieve it to the greater community unless we show them that we're being diligent with their money. What would you like to do? Good conversation here.
I have a couple more questions about the associate principal, then. Is that a middle school, high school position?
It'll be a K through twelve position, covering duties in both areas.
And what did the two TOSSA teachers, I'm not familiar with what their assignments were, so this person would be doing?
So the positions were dean of students and director of instructional technology.
Okay.
And so those would be reallocated administratively, those duties.
Say that, Anna.
Those duties would be reallocated.
No, but what were they? Dean of students and?
Oh, director of instructional technology.
Instructional technology.
Are you going to be able to find someone that can do those two roles to the level that they've been done as two separate people?
Yeah. Again, we're reallocating duties administratively, so some of those duties may go to other people than the new person that would come into that role.
Folks, we need something done here. We can eventually discuss this some more, but we need a yea or nay to move forward on this.
I'll make the motion to accept the proposal.
I'm sure what we're being asked to do because I'm not going to discuss it again in a next reading.
Yep, we can discuss it. Right now, there's a list out there of budget reduction items that have been recommended by the administration. And so Bill has made the motion that we accept the list as shown.
Yes. And then a list of names for, that will be attached to those will be coming at the February twenty-fourth meeting.
I will second it.
Seconded by Katie, to accept the list as shown, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, more discussion?
I guess I'd like to know what other, were there any programs that were looked at? I mean, I guess when you approved the three-ten, I understand that it's not all going to come from the supply budget, but I was not aware that they would all be positions. Was that the plan all along, or was this just the best-case scenario that you came up with as a team to get to this number?
I think the idea going into it was to make the reductions and not hurt our current programming that we have in place. And so if we start pulling off current programming, that is where we run into the problems that Mr. Hodges and Bob talked about earlier of possibly people leaving.
I think there's other things that would cause people to leave.
I think if there's other programs, I think if you have other programs that you would like to see reduced or discussed, I think that would be appropriate. That's fine. But it would go on top of what these are right here. Because this is the list that we're recommending programmatic-wise for reductions, and if you think that we need to talk about more, that's fine.
Brenda?
But I think if you're cutting, I think instructional technology's very important, and I also think that the media position's very important, and I don't see who's going to pick up those responsibilities and how that's going to not affect this programming and the students.
Tim, may I ask you for input on that?
Again, the day-to-day operation of the media center, I think I've got a good plan on how that will work. The upkeep of the catalog is kind of the piece that is left out of that. That's not an ongoing, kind of thing. That's a more kind of a once-a-year, twice-a-year, a year-to-year kind of deal. And I think we can come up with a plan to be able to manage that piece of things, too.
What about the instructional technology position?
You know, we've got two really good district tech people, and the piece that will be picked up by administration will be kind of the management of the department. We'll still be relying on our staff to be able to do that, working with staff. I mean, that's the primary, that was the primary goal of that position, is to work with staff and integrating technology into what you do. And although we, you know, will lose one point person for that, I don't think we'll lose having people that can do that in staff and professional level.
I think it's an important role, and I think, you know, the person doing it's done a great job, so I'd hate to see that happen. Not to mention any names, but...
I think you can make that sort of a statement about anybody within the school. And again, it's looking about doing things differently and getting the same results out of it. You may not get the exact same results, but you'll have something comparable and sometimes even better out of it.
I have to say, when I saw some of the, when I saw the cuts for the first time, I wasn't sure about them, and I had to really look objectively at the positions and not tie them to a name, not tie them to a person. Because I agree, we need to be, I agree that this, and it may, and I know it does, it's going to affect somebody, and it's going to affect some kids, and it's going to, everybody is affected by it. There's no way you can make three hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of cuts and not have kids or people affected in some way. But being that we are following, we are following guidelines, that we are looking at positions that we can reallocate, I feel like it's the least, a little lesser of two evils, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. It's like, it's trying to, we're trying to do the best we can without dropping programming. And so that's where I'm at with it. The whole thing makes me very ill to my stomach to have to even do these types of things, but I think for our financial status, it's necessary.
Well, I know these recommendations are hard for the admin, too. We respect your recommendations. It's a bit more work for you to have to reallocate everything then to be able to keep the staffing that we have.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. So all in favor of the approval of the fiscal year twenty-one list of budget reduction items, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. Okay. That passes by a four to two vote. It's very good discussion. Nobody's got a right answer. Nobody's got a wrong answer here. The input was very good. It's well thought out. Thank you. And thank you to the admin for your work on this. It's as tough for you as it is for us, at least. Okay, before we leave, I would just like to, I did receive something from the MSBA that they handed out last year about our responsibilities as a board and the board governance model that just kind of reinforces who we are and what we're supposed to do. So I'll hand those out at the end of the meeting, or if you can come up and grab one. Informational items, the next regular board meeting will be the twenty-fourth. World's Best Workforce Plan document, Dylan Mackey, a presenter, correct?
Yeah, he will, he's not going to give a full-on presentation. This will be his first time in front of you, so be nice. He's our career navigator. He might introduce himself, where he's from, and what his basic duties would be for now, and then we'll have him come back later when, again, when he's more comfortable and into the position. So he's only been on the job a few weeks.
The update on the McGalas pre-project resolutions of staff reduction, so more things coming on that end. And anything else that you would like for the cause, you can just contact Jeff or Lori and get it on there. So anything else as we close?
I'll be out of town next week, or on the twenty-fourth, for the next meeting.
If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Anna. Second it.
That's my turn.
Seconded by Katie. Thank you all for your thoughtful discussion on this. We have a motion, a second, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are finished.